Call the meeting to order. All right. Madam Clerk, can you through roll call, please? Well, no, actually, before we start, let me announce that it is a virtual meeting, of course, and the prayer and pledge of allegiance will be waived now, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
He's here.
Yeah, he's muted, but we do see that he's connected. Thank you, thank you, Michael. Councilmember Oystash.
Present.
Madam Clerk.
Here.
We have eight members present, one absent.
Thank you. Because there may be people online from the public, as we have public input and there may be others, I want to read, tell everyone that because this is a public meeting, but being conducted virtually, we ask that everyone respect the process and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting by an open mic. Please keep your mic muted or unmute until we recognize to speak, particularly if you are signed up to speak. The clerk will address you and notify you when it's time for you to speak. All right, Madam Clerk, we have some announcements today.
I do, Mayor, thank you. I'd like everyone to be aware of the filing deadline of July 21st for five council positions and two Saginaw Public School Board positions. The required documents are available at the City Clerk's office, can be picked up during regular business hours. Also, this is the last call for August election workers. The deadline for appointment is tomorrow. Protective precautions will be provided to all election workers. Please call the City Clerk's office at 759-1480 and press option 6 to get the Clerk's office. Also, for those of you that are keeping track, as of today, the City Clerk's office has issued 4,329 absentee ballots. This is a 71% increase from the 2016 August election. And we have three more weeks to go. So that's a good sign, thank you. Mayor, that takes us to public input.
Actually, thank you, Madam Clerk, but actually, I have an announcement as well. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna cover that now. And so you may know that by 1998, I had worked as an attorney for the city for a little over nine years. Coincidentally, this is my ninth year on council. And so after a lot of thought and consideration, I've decided that 18-plus years of service to the city will be enough, so I won't be running for reelection in November. I'm announcing this now, as I did not want to mislead anyone by filing, by nominating petitions, petitions, or by not filing them by the deadline when no one else could do so. This decision comes with a certain amount of regret, because I know there is more this council can do to move Saginaw forward, and I've loved being a part of that so far. Still, it is time for me to step down. I will finish my term through October, and I hope we will still accomplish more in that time. But I am also confident this council and its members will continue to move Saginaw forward, and that it will continue to be a strong and effective advocate and leader for this city. Now, Madam Clerk, we can proceed.
Yes, we are now at public input.
And I will read the rules for the public input. Welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly, so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, let us know if you'll be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching, SGTV, and to the council, so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you. Madam Clerk, our first one.
Our first speaker this evening is Shashma Jones.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, hi. My name is Shashma Jones, and I'm representing VNS Transportation. And I have three concerns. My one, my first concern is, I had a city council member that came to our grand opening and stated that they would be behind us 100%. And the city has not been behind us 100% at all, having been behind us no percent. We have been harassed and discriminated through the city of Saginaw. My next concern is, Jamie Corby, what did you mean when you said unfortunately, a worthy vision like ours wasn't chosen? I think that was, that was pretty, you know, that wasn't right. You know, you guys are the city councils and supposed to support the city of Saginaw, and you're not.
Is that all, Madam, that you have?
Yes, that's my concern, yes.
All right. They will be referred to the city manager for follow-up. We are ready for the next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Michael Noell.
Mr. Noell.
Hello there, city council. I know that the pandemic is going on, but I just noticed that, I drive all over the city from the north side to east-west and south side, and I just noticed that it's a lot of brush and tree limbs that's on people's curbs and they're not being picked up. And also, I just see that it's a lot, I know about the recycling that's supposed to, it's getting back now, but I just noticed that the roadside is full of clutter with plastic and, um, plastic bottles and metal, and metal. This is what I want to say to the council and stuff, that I would wish that the city council would advertise recycling a lot more, because people need to know more about it. It's like, where I live at, it's only two or three people that are recycling their, um, their, um, bottles and cans and news, and papers, newspapers, and paper products. So I just encourage the city council to encourage more, and let people know that when you're having days for recycling, but also just let them know that they can also recycle their electronics and stuff, because I see electronics on the side, on the side, on curbside. So that's just, I just want to help move it along by keeping the city much cleaner. Thanks for giving me the minutes to speak, I appreciate you guys, and you, and if I don't hear from you or whatever, have a nice, um, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Charles Cook.
Mr. Cook.
Is Charles there?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
I'm commenting, of course, about the statue of Father Nivel. And you got to realize that Father Nivel risked his life and went through very difficult times to come and bring Christianity to the Saginaw area. He is a great and good role model for Catholic Christians in the area, especially the time in which we need good role models. And to take down his statue, or to mess with it in any size, shape, or form, would not be a good idea to be pursued. I think we need more good role models in this day and age. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Dot Reifembar.
Ms. Reifembar? Janet was not able to get Dot access through her phone.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Our next speaker would be Robert Stricker.
Mr. Stricker?
Hello, Mayor Floyd and council folks. This is concerning the, it's not even a statue, it's an engraving, words of engraving of Father Henry Nivel in Ojibwe Park. Okay, now, there's nothing offensive about that marker. All it is, is commemorating the first, and it says on there, the first white man to say Mass in 1672, I believe it was. Now, the man that was complaining about it, him and his buddies, it seems like the word "white" offends them, and it should not. Okay, maybe I should have said "European," okay? It's no big deal. These guys need to get over it, okay? The Jesuits, this Father Henry himself came down from St. Ignace, and he, uh, he, uh, went through hell and high water just to spread Christianity. The cold, cold winters, the hot, hot summers. Now, the money, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make Mr. Verdoni an offer. If he puts up money, I will donate, I will meet, I will, uh, meet him 50/50 in funds to put up an additional marker right around there to commemorate where the Ojibwe people used to live. Now, several tribes lived in the area, and they sure enough weren't sitting around having a good time with each other, okay? They were warring and having fights and killing each other. So it was not, it was not the white man to blame for everything, and he should get over it. Now, over in California, they knocked down a bunch of statues of a saint, Saint Juniper O'Sara, that did a lot to bring Christianity to California. Now, we don't need that over here. Now, I believe him, him and his buddies used some common sense, and just leave it alone and study their history. The man was great, he did great things, he sacrificed a lot for this, for the state and this country. So leave it alone and read your history, my friend, and contact me if you want to too. I know your, I know your parents, they're great folks, so contact me if you want to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next, our next speaker is Robert Hellebuyck.
Mr. Hellebuyck. Janet, I was unable to reach Mr. Holmes.
Unable? Thank you, Jeff. Our next speaker will be Sheri DeFor Crozier.
Ms. DeFor Crozier here.
Yes, I am.
Proceed, yes.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm calling about the monument on the island. It was paid for by the Catholic Women's Society, and I believe 1951, and then placed there in 1952. Not the city nor the taxpayers paid for that. And in an article, Mr. Verdoni states that we pushed the natives out, but honestly, Native Americans still live in Saginaw County and the city, as I have many relatives who do. I see no problem with the wording of the monument. It is a historical fact of the island, and this is not a fact of privilege, and those who think it is need to reread that history. In 1675, it is significant that a white priest preached Mass on the banks of the river, as it was not even an island yet, and the first white settlement didn't arrive until 1816, and the treaty was not signed with the natives until 1819. And later, this island was created with logging, I believe, and was owned by the Russ family, who gave the land to the city, designated as a park. It was named a jibway for the sake of remembering the Chippewa, as was our city, Saginaw. But, to be frank, if the complaint is that we need to have a remembrance to the Native Americans as a monument for them on the island, I'm okay with that, as long as it's not paid for by the city nor tax dollars. And the Nivel monument stays, as is, no changes to it. And as a part of the Native American monument, we need to include the fact that the Native American tribes fought over this land amongst each other before Europeans even arrived. I have no problem with the accurate history, so let's be accurate. The Chippewa roamed throughout Michigan during glacier times, the land was scraped to the lakes, but roaming became a struggle, because the Sauk Indians were in the Saginaw Valley. The smart Chippewa did a surprise attack, and then the Sauk fought to the death. Women, men, and children that were Sauk fought to the death, and a few women survived, and they were given as slaves to the Sioux Indians with a promise of never returning to this area. Green Point Nature, or Green Point, whatever, is where the Chippewa first camped, not a jibway. And this is the history, as told from the tribe to the Delta College website, by the way. And to be honest, the fact that he was a white priest is significant, because there was no, no white people in this area at that time. It was an act of sheer bravery to come here and preach in this area when there were no white Americans here, no white people. We weren't America yet, so I shouldn't say white Americans, right? But that's all I want to say, and I hope you consider that and take that into, into consideration, you know? The tribes could pay for another statue, and as long as it's accurate to history. And why don't we change Crow Island to Sauk Island?
Thank you, your time, your time is up, ma'am, I have to cut you off.
Thank you, thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Alexander Verdoni.
Mr. Verdoni, if you're available.
Hello, I'm present. Yes, I very much agree that, that we need to be showing a more nuanced history. This is, I'm speaking in regards to Honoring Nivel Monument, and I'm speaking as myself. Verdoni, guys? Wait, can you hear me?
Well, there is a reverb, you may have to try and be more careful, I'm not sure where it's coming from. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm speaking in regards to Honoring Nivel Monument. Yes, I agree that we need to showcase a more nuanced history. And the reason why I brought up the monument was because I believe the monument does not show that nuanced history, especially since it is a monument, it says dedicated the first white man, and it's on an island that's named after their people. I actually don't know, like, I actually did hear that that island is artificially created, is actually created from the product of, um, of the lumber industry. But I, but I think that that, these kinds of things should be marked on the island, because I'm, I'm not very familiar with, with that history. And in terms of the dedication of the first white man, I, I'm going to speak as a Catholic. Is that, um, Honoring Nivel, first and foremost, would define, would identify by his faith as a Catholic, and not identify necessarily by his race. And Catholics are a people who are across the world, of many different types of races and ethnicities, well unified under the gospel of Jesus Christ. And so I find it disheartening that the very first word after Honoring Nivel is "a white man," when I think that perhaps the first word should say "a Catholic," or a Jesuit priest. And I, and I think that because it was erected in 1950s, it actually is racially motivated, because at that time, in 19, in the early 1950s, which was the McCarthy era, you know, the 30s, 40s, and 50s, we see a large migration of African-Americans moving from the south into the industrial north. And, and that, and that migration exploded in the midst of World War II, because of the armaments factories. And, um, and so in the midst of World War II, and in the aftermath of World War II, as the industrial, as industrial Michigan is resituating their armaments factories back into automobile factories, we see a larger population of African-Americans in Michigan. And I know that white Michiganders were pushing back at this time. And so I do believe that that monument is racially motivated, considering Saginaw's history of redlining, and at that exact time in 19, in the early 50s.
Mr. Verdoni, your time is up, I have to cut you off as well, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you for giving the time to speak.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our final speaker tonight is Barbara Cole.
Ms. Cole? Ms. Cole? Do you have your microphone muted, ma'am? Maybe? Well, apparently she is not coming on, so, Madam Clerk, I think we will need to move on.
Okay, our next order of business is remarks from council.
I wish to remind all councilmembers of their three-minute limit, and today we begin with Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Good afternoon.
Someone needs to, we have a reverb again, someone needs to turn the mic off.
For our, for our speakers, our public speakers, I'm sure that all of your questions will get answered. It was quite enlightening tonight, because I did learn some history that I didn't know, and I thank you for that. I wanted to highlight or update what we want to do as a city council, and I'm sorry, councilpeople, that I haven't gotten with you, but we are planning to do the census. We have some census activities planned for this coming Friday at First Ward Community Center. On, on the 23rd, which is a Thursday, we will be working at the Chiefs, at the Chiefs Conference at Bliss Park. Then on the 24th, we'll be at Saginaw Community Action Center, and on the 31st, we'll be at Holden Jones. These are the target areas that our census numbers are low in. We're, I'm only asking you if you can give me an hour. We're only doing it from 11 to 1:00. If you're interested, I need you to be there by 10:30, and one day this week, I hope, Wednesday, by Wednesday or Thursday, we need to pack the bags. What I mean by pack the bag is, we have some trinkets and some stuff that we plan to give away at the census. We need to let our citizens know that how important it is for them to do the census. Remember, for every one person, we get $1,800. For every one person not counted, we get zero. So I need the help of my fellow councilpeople, if you're not busy, if you can just give me 30 minutes. That's 30 minutes that the community will get to talk to you, and they will get to see your lovely face. And with that, I pass.
You are muted. You are muted. Madam Clerk, you're muted.
I'm just muted, and I'm trying to keep it quiet on my end. All right. Councilmember Bench is next, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I think I'll be brief tonight, but with the governor's new order mandating that masks be worn, I would just ask and encourage everybody to mask up, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, can you hear me now?
Real reverb there.
Sounds like you need to move away from something.
Let me try now. I guess I'll pass, I'm sorry.
Next, then, we have, well, Councilmember Williams, has he joined us? Councilmember Williams?
Yes, I'm here.
Then welcome, and you're up.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I will be brief, I just want to say that I appreciate our citizens speaking tonight in regards to Ojibwe Island. I hope that what we can do in the future with a lot of statues and monuments is put up maybe something that just explains a little bit more history next to the statues and monuments versus taking everything down. And maybe that's something that could be explored, to just educate people like we were educated this evening on, on that monument. With that, I would also like to encourage everyone to wear their mask when they're out, and I hope that people will, will oblige by that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Oystash.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and thanks, Mayor. Well, first of all, I just want to let everybody know that the Counter Cruise is riding again this year, so every Monday night, 7:00 PM, they start out at the state, at the Oak Stable, which is now Two Makers. They're asking people to mask up if you're going to ride, and so that is something to do some thing, right, too, and so that's kind of fun. I do want to give a shout-out and a congratulations, because I don't think she's getting enough to miss Saginaw County, Simone Vaughn, and I encourage her and wish her luck and much, and her goal is to bring that pageant back to Saginaw County. In regards to Mr. Noel, who spoke tonight and about trash, I mean, I feel your pain, and there is quite a bit. We've been doing a lot of pickup soon in the neighborhood, so you're definitely something that I'm very passionate about, too, and I hope that people can hear that, because a lot of times we hear "We want a nice city," and that starts with us. And so taking the trash home instead of throwing it out the window and just dealing with it, so that is your message. To the folks who spoke tonight in our public input, especially about the Rock, um, Ojibwe Island, the monument to Mr. Noel, after the last meeting, I did a lot of research, and some of the research involved Kevin, who actually teaches Michigan history. So a lot of the story, a lot of the stories that I heard tonight were what I already do know, and it's very factual, especially, I remember who it was, it was, there was a lot of history of the Sauk tribes, which were actually here first, yes, there was a lot of fighting and the Sauk that were out. And then also, just from 1875 to 1819, all of the treaties that were signed in Michigan and everywhere were upheld, and that's when they came in, and basically, the Indians were then, I don't want to say driven out, but they lost their treaties. But a lot of the tribes are still here. Yours truly, I'm a descendant of the Chippewa tribe, a lot of my ancestors were full-blooded Native Americans that passed during 1940. So, so thank you for that tonight. I am in support, and maybe we can talk about it, but actually, like Mr. Williams just said, maybe something else on the island that would give some sort of homage to the fact that the Sauk Indians were here, and also the Chippewa tribe as well. So that would just kind of give us an all-around history lesson out there on the island, and it would be something that would be great to read. I assume people would read it. In the Cateevo district, where we have a lot of our historic homes, we have signs that are outside, and people do stop to read about, oh, Mr. Oystash lives in the Wolf House, and they had a big bank for you in Saginaw, and it details all of that information, and even across the street, with some of my neighbors who've done that, too. So, so thank you for bringing that to the council tonight and giving us that information. Ms. Bench already kind of mentioned the mask up, please, everybody, it does really help out, and I think it's a way we can continue to keep this curve flattened and not going up. And also, I just kind of want to make, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We're good, thanks.
All right. Next, Councilmember Balls.
Good evening, everybody, good evening, citizens of the city of Saginaw. I just like to speak on, I, I'm getting a lot of emails, people telling me to speak against wearing the mask. I'm not going to do that, because I think that the masks are really needed right now. A lot of people walking around without masks, and now I come to find out that a lot of young people are getting this COVID disease, so I would encourage everybody to wear a mask when y'all are in public. Other thing I wanted to speak about was the Youth Bill. Corporation has opened up in Saginaw, any youth between the age of 16 to 24, even kids who have dropped out of school can come to Youth Bill and start a new career dealing with skilled trades and all the skilled trades. The office is located at 126 South Washington, and we do take kids who have graduated from school, too, at 16 to 24. So if anybody know anybody that want to start a new career with young adults, who tells them to please come down to 124 South Weta, and tell them to get involved in the Youth Bill. There's some exciting things going on down there, as far as teaching kids about skilled trades, and how to get involved in being a tradesman or a trade woman. If you guys are rolling by the earth, you see we painted the building, all the youth have helped build walls in there, paint, somebody's learning electricity, and our skilled trade pods are arriving daily. There's going to be 18 different pods dealing with each trade, to teach kids about pipe fitting, electricity, bricklaying, carpentry, mechanical, and even windmill. We have some windmill technology down there, too. So if anybody know anybody that want to start a new career in skilled trade, tell them to come down to 126 South Weta and get enrolled in the Youth Bill program. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say, I would like to, I would like to say one thing about the citizens of the city of Saginaw, to please, 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 put them guns down. I'm tired of hearing about people getting shot in the city of Saginaw about little minor stuff. I mean, that's ridiculous. So I would encourage anybody, my relatives included, if you out there gang-banging or whatever, put that stuff down, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Clock. Just a couple of things, I'm sure many people have noticed this, but City Hall is open again. Personal interaction is available to the citizens of Saginaw, there are changes physically in the building, a lot of physical distancing, and we've got masks and sanitizing in place, but I think it's a great step forward. But I think it's a great step forward where public facilities are open again. This includes, uh, uh, with proper personal protection, uh, masks, you can visit a fire station. And, uh, the fire department is processing burn permits again. So for those of you who are looking for a fire pit in your backyard, they are in the process of taking care of a backlog they had and getting up to date on that. Uh, one of the questions I get a lot from people I'm talking to right now is, how's the city's fiscal health looking? And I just wanted to point out that in comparison to some other local municipalities and county, uh, governments, uh, up to this point, through the end of our last fiscal year, due to COVID nineteen, we have not had to initiate layoffs. Uh, the city of Midland had to lay off a number of people. The county here has laid off a number of people. And I just think this speaks to the hard work that, uh, the management staff has done. And, uh, with the approval of the city council, we entered this tough period in a strong fiscal situation. And, uh, we hope that can continue. I think our city manager and his staff deserve a lot of credit for heading off problems that other, uh, entities have had to deal with. And, uh, that's pretty much everything I'm gonna say this evening.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Scherzer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I'd like to say thank you to our public input and to those that are watching at home. Um, I am sure the city staff will follow up with your concerns. Please know that there will be continued conversation, as there has been, uh, regarding the issue. And I'm here with my fellow council members. Um, I also just, um, also, Mayor, I hope everyone is staying safe and wearing their masks. And we have a world that's full of uncertainty right now. Um, so I just hope everybody looks, ta- takes a step back and looks inside and finds some love because with love, we also need some understanding. And that's in our nation, in our country, in our state, and especially in our city. Um, and then last, I do want to say to our mayor, congratulations. And thank you for your service to the city in all of the capacities that you've served over the years. Um, you really have showed your heart and your desire to make Saginaw thrive. So thank you, and, uh, you will be missed on council. And that is all I have for today.
Thank you. We're ready to proceed. Um, Madam Clerk, or no, I believe we're at reports of manager.
Uh, Mayor Clock, would you like to make any comments?
No, I will pass.
Pass, okay.
I've already had my comments, so.
Okay. All right, then we are at reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. And, uh, I would first echo, uh, Autumn, or Councilmember Scherzer's comments and, um, thank the mayor for, uh, all of his service to the city over the years. So as an employee and as a council member, but I know we've got quite a few months left to go with you, Mayor. So look forward to working with you, uh, for the rest of your term here. And since most of the, um, public input was dedicated to the monument, uh, to Henry Noel, I wanted to comment on that. Uh, to kind of summarize, I did send a statement to council members from the Catholic Diocese from Bishop Gress, as well as, uh, some comments that we received back from the Saginaw Chippewa tribe. And maybe this will, um, impact, uh, some of the people who wish to talk. So hopefully, uh, those individuals are still, uh, listening online or either watching the council meeting. Um, the comments we received back from, uh, the tribal council stated that they wouldn't, uh, not be in support of removing the monument from Ojibwe Island. However, as many other people have echoed, they would be interested in, um, something to honor, uh, the Native American tribes that were in the area. And I think that would be a great addition to the island. And, um, I haven't had a chance to, uh, contact, uh, Mr. Plutet yet, but I will be contacting him to discuss that further. Uh, the Catholic Diocese, um, actually contacted me after the last meeting very proactively. And, um, in the bishop's, uh, letter to the city, he did say that, um, they are a member of our community. They do not want to offend or harm. Um, they're always willing to have a conversation about any topics, I think, and, and especially this monument. So, um, I like the, the discussion that we had this evening and the comments about possibilities of, um, adding things to the island and putting things into context. So I think that's a great direction for us. Our team met to talk about the police oversight board, which we've been, uh, talking about. And, um, in our group, we, we did include Councilman Reggie Williams. And I think we had a, a good meeting. We have a good direction to go. And, uh, the city attorney and I are currently working on ordinance to establish that board. And we believe that there are elements from other cities that we've seen who have established, uh, this type of board. I think we can, um, take good parts from both of those. And we also had a base foundation from our own board that we have here in the city previously. The, um, Study Committee for the Human Rights Commission is also, um, planning to meet, will be meeting next week. So, um, council members on that study committee are, again, uh, Councilman Oystash, Councilman Balls, com- or Mayor Pro Tim Moore. And with that one, um, I did, uh, research, and I know the city attorney did as well, on police oversight board, since that was initiated, uh, from the city manager's office. The Human Rights Commission Study Group was initiated from council. So if council members have items they want us to review or discuss, I'd ask that you send those to me or Vicky Davis in my office prior to that meeting next week. So, um, we can provide that to the committee and, um, use those as the starting of our point of discussion. Uh, I know the city attorney and I have already looked at some other H R Cs throughout the state. Um, so we do have that base of knowledge, but we would definitely welcome input from other council members. Um, I also wanted to update council on, uh, the fireworks that have been going off in the neighborhood because I know, or neighborhoods, because I know, uh, many of you have been contacted, as I have been contacted. Uh, I've seen a lot of comments online, um, a couple of different sites, uh, implying that we didn't do much as a city. So I asked the fire department and the police department, uh, to put together a report just so I could update you all on, on what we did do. And again, uh, several of you have noted, this has been a national issue this year for a lot of reasons. Um, cities across, uh, the country have reported significant increases in fireworks complaints. So initially, uh, we started getting calls, and then we set up the Stop the Noids email account. And, um, I spoke with, uh, Chief Ruth and Chief Van Lou. And over the course of the last month, uh, we've had forty-six police officer overtime shifts between June eighth and July ninth on various dates, including July first through the fourth and July sixth through the ninth. Saginaw Fire Department have personnel out on overtime shifts as well. Uh, July first, second, and third, they run six shifts. They patrol the city, stop and interact with the people using fireworks. Over that three-day period, they made contact with approximately three hundred and sixty people at several locations, mostly large groups gathering and shooting off fireworks. And, and the fire department was, um, involved in educating on safety and also the local ordinances and state laws related to fireworks. I think, uh, one of the things, uh, for everyone to think about and talk to, uh, constituents and neighbors about is safety related to fireworks as well. We believe there are approximately fifteen fires related to fireworks, uh, that the fire department responded to. And I would imagine there were probably some that did not get called in as well. And that included three structured fires. So when we have very dry weather like this, it's, it's, uh, somewhat hazardous to be utilizing, uh, projectile fireworks. And finally, um, I sent an email out to a number, to council members last evening. We did post it on our social media that, um, we were closing Ojibwe Island again. Um, the island did just open, I believe it was, uh, July fifth. So it hasn't been open very long. Um, we had several police calls to the is- island for large gatherings. There was very little social distancing, uh, very little use of masks. So out of, uh, out of a fundance of caution, we're closing vehicle access to the island. And, um, considering today, we looked at a number of other parks as well. We talked to the mayor and Mayor Pro Tim this morning. And, uh, we will be closing vehicle access to all of our parks that have, uh, graded parking areas because of this issue. Um, it was, uh, it was communicated to us that Ojibwe Island is the only park that had large gatherings, um, without social distancing. So, um, it is not possible for us to enforce, uh, the governor's orders in such large, open spaces with the limited staffing that we have. So this is the best option that we have at this time to limit the exposure related to the virus. And as I said, these, um, these parks were just open a matter of, uh, week or two ago. And we'll be returning to the previous status of those parks. Um, so, uh, please feel free to contact if you have any questions like that. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, I have a quick question, if you wouldn't mind.
Clerk, may I go right ahead? For the ma- for the manager, I assume. You, we lost you. You're on mute.
I am. You hear me now?
Yes.
All right. A quick, a quick question for the manager. We're doing some reading over the weekend and heard about, um, potential hazard pay for first responders. I was wondering, um, uh, whether or not we had put in an application to the state for that program.
We are, um, there are a number of programs that are in that bill. I think it was Senate Bill six ninety. Um, we are first, uh, working on applications for, um, COVID nineteen related expenditure reimbursement generally. And, um, we are working on a hazard pay, um, application as well, although we currently don't have, we haven't made, uh, hazard pay available. So, um, it was recommended to me by a state treasury that if we are going to do that, we would, uh, M O U with the unions, um, which is only public safety unions. It would not include other unions at this time. Um, so that is something that we plan to do, but it will involve, um, more communication. But our entire fiscal services team is working on that, including the controller and, uh, uh, finance director and office of management and budget. So anticipate us, um, working on that, uh, both of those grants. And we plan to have that, I think we plan to have them submitted by either tomorrow or Wednesday. It is first come, first served. Um, what I would also mention to council that you can take back constituents is that bill also has funding in it for individuals to help with, uh, water bills. So the governor did extend the order, um, that states that we cannot, uh, discontinue water service for non-payment of invoices, water invoices. However, that doesn't mean that those charges don't continue to accumulate over the year. And we don't want anyone to have a big surprise next January when the order expires or whenever it is that we get back to normal operations. Those account balances will be, uh, quite high. So if you know someone who's in trouble like that or, um, just spreading the information, that funding is going to, uh, nonprofits and other agencies. So they should contact, uh, Health and Human Services, uh, and ask about that if it's something that they're interested in to help pay for their water bills.
All right, okay. Any other questions of, uh, the manager?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Pro Tim, uh, city manager, we also have, uh, Saginaw Community Action Center who has COVID nineteen money for anybody that needs help with consumers and a number of other things. They should contact Saginaw Community Action at area code nine eight nine seven five three seven seven four one. They have a variety of things that they can help the community people with. And I know that water, consumers, rent, and some other things are in that pot. So that's another resource. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager? Anybody? All right. Hearing none, uh, we can move on, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
Uh, that, the consent agenda has been available at City Hall on the city website, uh, S G T V, turn one ninety-one. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk to the consent agenda? Anybody? Any exceptions? One more time, any exceptions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Don't move. This is Autumn.
Move, report. Councilmember Scherzer moved, and Count Mayor Pro Tim Moore, I believe, seconded.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Should we do a roll call, Madam Clerk? Are you okay with just, uh, if we have no objections? First, are there any objections?
I believe the exceptions would be your objection.
Okay. At this point, we have no object, no, no nays, so the mo- the motion carries. All right. Um, next, uh,
Our next order of business is boards, commission, committee reports.
Are there any boards, commissions, or committee reports from any council members? Any council members?
We are continuing to meet, I'm sorry, this is Mayor Pro Tim Moore. We are continuing to meet with Region Seven. Um, as a matter of fact, we are in the mode of a, talking with our elected officials and sending letters in, asking them to support all of the elderly programs that we have in place. They are also issuing vegetable and food boxes to the elderly. Um, and just wanted to share that they are moving forward with giving the city of Saginaw a, and right now I'm at thirty-eight boxes that I get to hand out. And I actually deliver them on Tuesdays or Thursdays to the senior citizens in the city of Saginaw. So I'm excited about that, that we are now in the pot with the big key, with the big league.
Very good. Any other boards, commissions, or reports?
Mayor Clock?
Yes, Councilmember Milne.
Yes, uh, just wanted to pass along that we have, uh, um, decided not to meet for the Brownfield Authority. We did not have any action items, so we haven't had a meeting for our last two scheduled meetings. I believe our next opportunity will be in October. Uh, so I have no actual report from the meeting, just that we're not having them. And, um, from the Airport Commission, just a general note that, uh, in the sense of fiscal health that I was discussing earlier, airport revenues, I'm sure everyone knows, would be down. We're running roughly at twenty to twenty-five percent normal revenue out of the airport. So they've, they've had to replace a lot of that with, uh, COVID nineteen CARES Act stimulus money. And so operations are being covered. They have not had to lay off employees at the airport either. But, uh, some of that only runs probably through the end of this year. So that will be an ongoing situation there. And that's all.
Thank you. Any other reports from any boards, commissions, or committees? Anybody? And hearing none, Madam Clerk, we're ready to proceed.
We are now at appointment of board and commission members.
Are there, uh, any, um, exceptions to the three appointments, uh, to be noted by the clerk before we, before we proceed? Any exceptions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve all three of the, uh, remaining items?
Move to approve. Or seconded.
All right. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Councilor Moore. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any, any opposed? Motion carried.
Um, Our next order of business is resolutions. We do have one this evening, and it's to establish an emergency polling location for the August fourth and the November third, twenty twenty elections.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll move.
Move to adopt.
Moved to adopt.
I think we can do the same. We'll, we'll give credit to Councilmember Milne for the motion this term of time, and Mayor Protem for the second. Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question for Clerk Santos. I was interested to know, is it within the usual language of our agreements for these that they can withdraw at such a late date from being a polling location where, do we not normally require at least 30 days' notice?
Yes, there's specific terminology within the agreements for proper notification. However, the COVID-19 situation was the main reason why the current location wanted to
I understand. Are we in the process of researching any other backups to weeks? If we had a similar situation arise with another polling location, do we have some backup possibilities?
There was a potential out there, but that did not come to fruition. So I'm happy to report that no one else has canceled at this time. I don't foresee them canceling since we've been in contact with them. In the meantime, we are researching a permanent location for Precinct 3 to continue the future elections after this year.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I only hear one vote. Is that all?
I said aye.
Aye.
There we go. Is there any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Madam Clerk.
We are now at miscellaneous business.
Is there, okay, Mayor Protem?
Mayor Clock, you caught me off guard. I'd like to also piggyback off Councilwoman Scherzer. Thank you for all of your service. You caught me off guard with that. So I didn't want you to think that, I didn't want to say anything. And I was like, okay, we're not going to do this cry thing. We're going to let him bow out. We're going to let him go our gracefully. But I do want to thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your commitment. And as we spoke about it, yeah, I might be right behind you as well. So have a good time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other miscellaneous business to be had? Hearing none, motion adjourned?
Moved, Moore.
For Scherzer.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, just one, come on, speak up, folks.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.